I'd like to call the chief's order. I'd like to open our business this evening. We have an open meetings poster posted by the door. Want me to take a look at that? Do you have roll call?
Ochsner.
Yeah.
Shelkov.
Yes.
Donovan.
Here.
Kleinschmidt.
Here.
Whitewine.
Yes.
Maloney.
Here.
Del Meyer.
Yes.
None, yes.
This is the portion of the meeting that we use for public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening?
Whitewine.
Yes.
Donovan.
Yes.
Shelkov.
Yes.
Kleinschmidt.
Yes.
Ochsner.
Yes.
Maloney.
Yes.
None, yes. Del Meyer.
Yes. This is the portion of the meeting that we use for public comment. Do we have any public comments this evening? Now we have a treat. A acting performance by Kip and Andreist. Kip Shager and Andreist Campbell.
While they're getting set up, we had conference two weeks ago and we were as a team conference runner-up and they were conference champions with this duet. So I think we're gonna... You guys wouldn't mind in the front row. I don't want them to step on you or spit on you. Just because they have those...
Are we too close?
Yeah, you guys want to move to the side because they spit. It's kind of like camels.
We need it last round.
Yes, with more I've... I've heard all about you.
And I you.
Your reputation is impeccable.
They say you first played hamlet at the age of 12.
Huh, 11.
You've been in over 500 hamlets worldwide.
Indeed.
They raved in the Times.
And you Whitmore, you played Willy Lomond at eight.
Yes.
The complete work of various stoppies at 12, I did. And Lear at 13.
The Post called him the best Lear ever played by a 13-year-old. I say I found Lear's overriding humor.
So you know why I'm here?
Because they say you're the best in the business.
Well, I am.
I'm the best actor.
No, I'm the best.
No, trust me, I'm the best.
There's nothing worse than having a battle of egos.
Especially between two actors.
Brown and Whitmore meet up finally for the first time to battle it out and see who's the greatest actor in...
The Battle of Brown and Whitmore by David J. LaMasseur.
So, it comes to that, does it?
It is inevitable.
There can only be one greatest.
And this shall prove it.
It shall.
I will prove my range. I can act any emotion.
Plus can I.
Ha! Then prove it. Happiness. Sadness. Fear. Excitement. Anger.
Whoa!
Frustration. Frustration. You can act frustration no better than that?
Oh, I can too. I was making a statement. I'm really frustrated.
Oh.
We're gonna have to have more than a simple contest to determine who is greatest. As I feared, it will actually require a fight.
Then I'm your man.
So do that.
Very well. Choose your weapon.
Um... Tragedy by Paces.
Tragier? Are you sure?
I've found a weakness.
I have no weakness.
Really? Because the quiver in your voice suggests that you wished for comedy.
Comedy, never. That is your strength.
Ah, but I chose tragedy. It confuses you way Whitmore.
Tragedy it is. By Paces?
I'll count.
Fight. Fight from the amount of perform. Get ready, ready. Ready?
Ready.
One, two, three, four, five.
Give me all that stuff, gentlemen! It's just all the stuff that you... You have swore tragedy, but you have performed comedy! My specialty. You are wounded, I see.
Oh, scratch is scratch.
Oh, but it is enough. Call on thee tomorrow and I shall find thee a grave man.
Not the old play genre switch.
Blow winds, crack your cheeks, rage, blow... Oh, come on, you're hitting me with Lear!
Your Carrot and Hurricane Spout!
Oh, please! Have you had enough?
You're butchering it!
You devil! Your Carrot and Hurricane Spout!
You're a worthy opponent, but I believe only one of us shall walk away.
Still living! Your challenge is... It's well meant.
So how shall we settle this?
By scenes.
Scenes, you villain!
Oh, you are afraid.
I am not.
You jest. Your face turns yellow.
It does not.
Does too like your belly.
A yellow-belly...
A yellow-belly coward!
You have insulted me the last time, you dog, you coward! You mangy cur!
Your witisms, they're no match for my rigid sharp wit!
Oh, you are but a...
Certainly not.
You are but a half-wit.
You'll pay for that.
You mean...
The challenge. To the death!
As you wish. The weapon.
Scenes.
Scenes it is.
But who should go first?
A gentleman would yield.
Well, I'm no gentleman.
My point. We'll flip.
Heads or tails?
Tails.
Oh, it's heads!
Of curses!
In your place, or may the best actor win.
All right, all right. I choose the battle between Macucio, Tybalt, and Romeo.
Romeo and Juliet, one man! It cannot be done!
Oh, but it shall. A public court of men. The players, the Montagues, all regal, proud, and then the boy. Romeo, good Romeo, good hardy Romeo, impetuous Romeo. And then the friend. Macucio, cloudish, buffoon, headstrong, but stubborn. And then, in waltz, is Tybalt. The rat catcher, the king of cats, who does seek Romeo harm? Thou consorted with Romeo, Macucio?
Oh, consult!
I do believe I never injured thee, but love thee better than I can't devise. And then, the fight. What wouldst thou have with me?
Oh, nothing but one of your nine lives!
I'm gone! And then, Romeo, impetuous, gets in the way. Oh, Tybalt, good Macucio! And then, the final thrust. Why, the devil came you between us? I thought all for the best. I play on both your houses. Your maidworms beat have me. Romeo swears revenge. This day's black fate, more days not depend. But begins the woe others must end. And then, the final fight. Thou wretched boy! And then, the final thrust. Romeo away and gone! Well, have I won?
Not yet, not quite yet. Surrender, you fool.
Never. My work.
Yes. The tragedy of Othello.
The more. Which scene?
The end.
Crime, you play both men and women?
Yes.
Very well. Speak your piece.
Othello, brave warrior, and African Muslim, Italy, and out of place but valiant and pure. It is the cause, it is the cause, my soul. Great loser's first beard, you're daring. Do you mind?
Sorry.
And then the villain. Iago, a snake, a white-bearded Satan. A friend your face, but enemy when your back is turned. I hate the more, it's thought a brother tricks my sheets. He has done my... And then the villain's wife. Amelia, an opportunist, a backstabber, and a feminist.
Let husbands owe their wives some respect!
And last, Desdemona, sweet, loving, devoting, pure as snow. Willow. 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 But suspected by Othello, for Iago has said of Cassio.
In sleep I heard him say, "Sweet Desdemona, curse me, give it to more."
But Othello believes, for the fool Cassio. Reputation, reputation, reputation. Has fallen for Iago's trick and carries around Othello's cigarette handkerchief, the one among the gate to him... And he gave to Desdemona. The scene, Othello's bedroom, the deed... Murder! Othello poaches the bed. Zounds, I shall not shed her blood, yet she must die. Put her plate, and put her plate.
Talk you of killing?
The handkerchief I stole and gave to thee, thou gavest to Cassio.
I never gave it to him!
He hath confessed! Oh, thou, strum it! He smirrs her. She fights. He smirrs her. She fights. He smirrs her. She fights. He wins. It is too late. Desdemona sneaks once again after her death. Oh, no, no! Nor dead, nor quite dead! He smirrs her. She fights. He wins. I let him cruel and let so merciful, so... So... But an aunt comes, as I never gave thee cause. Amelia.
Oh, thou, the more, the handkerchief I found! Filth thou lies!
Iago stabs Amelia. Although I look upon his feet, but let be a fable. If thou be'st the devil, I cannot kill thee. Othello stabs Iago. Oh, I bleed, sir, but not killed. I'm not sorry either. For my sense, does happiness to die. I bleed, sir, but not killed.
Oh, you villain!
So what now? You will have to finish me off. Point blank combat.
Ah, dead comedy!
You're not funny.
I'll pay for that, villain.
Your choice of weapons.
A Midsummer Night's Dream.
Oh, I could play it all myself, if you wouldn't dare. I would do the... The men. The ladies, the demons, and the fairies.
Oh, gaslit.
You devil.
Will play the plague.
You mean...
The most flammable comedy in the most cruel death of Pyramus and Thizbee.
You mustn't.
Can't he's come found? Stop, help, sword, and wound the pepper Pyramus.
I that left pepper.
Oh, you fiend! Where hurteth up? Thus die I.
Thus!
Thus! Thus! Now I am dead, now I am fled. The moon is in the sky.
Come, lose thy light!
Moon, take thy flight! Now die!
Die?
Yes, die!
Die, die!
Thank you for allowing us to perform. And we duck out of here because we have districts tomorrow and they're not being practising.
Then we'll go into reports from the administration. Mr. Rose.
Not a lot to add, just from the report. We did have a nice turnout for parent-teacher conferences. We had just right at 70 percent for our parents in the spring. That's pretty good number for us. Busy time right now. The speech wrapping up things and the spring sports starting. We had a very nice number of athletes out for spring sports, so very pleased about that. Busy spring, the rest of the year with our calendars, so it won't be long until the graduation. Do you have any questions? Thank you.
Not too much to add to the written report. Just shared a reminder that we are in the fourth quarter of the school year now. Friday the 2nd was the end of the third quarter. Just again, another quick note, Mr. Rose. We had parent-teacher conferences last Monday and Tuesday. A pretty busy portion of the school year coming up. This week at the middle school, we're trying to complete our Iowa test of basic skills. We do those tests with both our sixth grade and our eighth grade students. And we'll be trying to complete those over a three-day period this week, starting tomorrow. It'll be Tuesday, Wednesday, and Thursday. And then the NESA testing window opens up this month as well. Lots of activities going on. Gave a little bit of information about some of the things that have been happening recently with the spelling contest and recent Quiz Bowl. The spring concerts coming up towards the end of this month. Seven o'clock in the middle school gym. Students in all grades, five through eight, will be participating in that concert. That will be both vocal music and instrumental music. Would certainly encourage you to attend if you could. And if you do plan on coming, I would advise you to get there early as seats begin to fill up very quickly on that concert. And it's always a very nice concert. Usually lasts about an hour, so just right amount of time for that too. So would encourage you to attend if you could. And I believe that our middle school track began their season today with their practices this afternoon. Any questions on...
Not too much to add to my written report either. The assessment season is upon us and we have the Iowa test of basic skills and the NESA writing out of the way. But third and fourth grade will also be taking the NESA reading and the NESA math. We had two events where we had volunteers and parents come to campus for our Proud Panther Night and for Dr. Seuss's birthday, Read Across the Community. And both were well-attended and fun learning events. And for parent-teacher conferences, we had 95 percent attendance. And we'll contact all those who didn't. And some of those, that handful at 5 percent, have also already been rescheduled. So we had a great turnout. Any questions for me?
Yeah, I think I sent you our mid-year financial report in your packet. I'll just review that for you quickly. Our budget, our actual budget is $8,070,000. But if you recall, we built $500,000 in there as cash reserves. So I'm considering our budget really to be $7,570,000. And halfway through, we've spent 46 percent of our budget, which means we have, of course, 54 percent left. And that's a good thing because, you know, we have less expenditures in the summer than we do the school year. So we're right on track. Our total revenue right now is $3,357,000 and our expenditures are $3,512,000. So we're on track with our budget. We did have some leaks in the elementary roof with that one heavy snowstorm in February. The majority of the original roof was done three years ago, or all of the original roof was done three years ago. And it has a 15-year warranty. But the 1992 classroom part had some leaks. And the Zimbas want to put a new membrane on it. And they say we should do that before it starts raining a lot in the spring. Because once all the insulation gets wet, then you have to tear everything off. So they're willing to do that. And then they want to look further at the stage. The stage and the cafeteria roof, there was too much snow on it to look. It wasn't leaking, but it's the only other area that we haven't done. So they'll take a look at that this summer when they're doing that. But they're going to try, if they can, to get back and repair that this spring, yeah, before you get any more rain or moisture. We had approved replacing the last elementary chiller. We have three chillers at the elementary, two are new. The third one kind of conked out last summer. So Kelch has got us through the summer, but it does need to be replaced. And its estimated cost is $60,000. So by policy, anything over $40,000, we bid out. So we'll get that and we'll get that bid. And also just a reminder that the middle school gym lights will be replaced this summer, much like the high school gym lights. And those were projects approved by the Building and Grounds Committee last October. And I think the board voted on them in December. The Mabel Matties Netza scholarships, those are due April 1st from the students that apply. And then I'll bring them to the April board meeting and the board will vote on that. Lynn and I went through and we're estimating that the interest for next September would be about $1,800. Last year, we gave a $1,400 or $1,500 scholarship to one person. But $1,800, and you can decide if you want to give $3,600 to $900. But we can only use the interest, the principal amount has to stay in the fund. So something you might be thinking about on that line. Reminder that the bond vote is tomorrow between 8:00 and 8:00. NERCA, the NERCA convention is March 22nd and 23rd. That's next week on all-day Thursday and half-a-day Friday. And if you're interested in going, just contact Jody and she'll take care of making the arrangements for you. I do have, before you leave tonight, Sherry and Dennis some things to sign. We get some mini diplomas that we get the kids. And we need the president and the secretary's signature. And then three contracts, my contract that we approved last month. And then contracts for Steve Atkinson and Jody Meyer. If the board goes to approve those tonight, I need some signatures on those, so... And that's my report.
Questions for Ms. Melvin? Okay, and we'll move into the action items. Minutes of the February 13th regular board meeting. Need a motion? By Janet, seconded by Sean. Discussion? Roll call?
Shelkov?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Whitewine?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Del Meyer?
Yes.
Move on to the financial reports. Need a motion to approve the financial reports? It's moved by Kleinschmidt, seconded by Shelkov. That the board approved the financial reports as presented. Discussion? Roll call?
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Whitewine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
General fund claims, need a motion? Moved by Jim, seconded by Mark, that the board approved the general fund claims in the amount of $108,693.42. Discussion? Roll call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Whitewine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
Principal contracts, first would be Mr. Rose. Need a motion?
Second.
Sure.
Jim. It's moved by Janet, seconded by Jim, that the board approved a contract with Jim Rose as high school principal for the 2012-2013 school year with a salary to be determined later. Discussion? Roll call?
Shelkov?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Whitewine?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes. Need a motion for the elementary principal contract?
Second.
It's moved by Sean, seconded by Janet, that the board approved a contract with Michelle Raymond as elementary school principal for the 2012-2013 school year with a salary to be determined later. Discussion? Roll call?
Maloney?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Whitewine?
Yes.
And Del Meyer?
Yes.
Need a motion for the middle school principal?
Second.
Dave. Moved by Dave and seconded by Janet, that the board approved a contract with Mr. Steve Atkinson as middle school principal for the 2012-2013 school year at a salary of $72,500. Discussion?
I, just as a plaintiff, represent, who really appreciated this stuff would come to the board for approval before contracts were offered and accepted. That's all I have to say.
One question I have, and I hope this doesn't throw a wrench in anything, is that we talked about with sports and everything, Steve then be able to continue on as a softball coach? Or, I mean, that puts us in a dilemma. We've always said administrators, or you've said administrators not coaching in our athletics, so is that...
I've never said that. Mark Rogge was administrator, coached basketball.
Because we only had two people on it, and that's why. That's why.
We don't make decisions on coaching till the spring. We wanted to hire the best principal. And I think we did that. So we haven't determined any coaching assignments yet.
Roll call?
Ochsner?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Whitewine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, no. Del Meyer?
Yes.
New staff contract, Ms. Jody Meyer as high school language arts instructor. Who made the motion?
Jim.
Jim and Dave.
Jim and Dave.
Moved by Jim, seconded by Dave, that the board approved a contract for Ms. Jody Meyer as high school language arts instructor for the 2012-2013 school year. Discussion? Another Fillmore Central graduate.
Welcome back to Fillmore Central.
Roll call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Ochsner?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Whitewine?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Del Meyer?
Yes.
Now we move on to the school calendar. Need a motion?
Move.
Moved by Mark, seconded by Randy, that the board approved the 2012-2013 school calendar as presented. Discussion? Roll call?
Whitewine?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloli?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Delmeyer?
Yes.
Audio/video recordings, need a motion? I'll make motion.
Second.
They need to probably clarify, so we know, are we talking audio and video, Sean, or just audio?
Oh, yeah. Audio and video.
Well, I think that's, I think what we need to discuss, we do have what you said out, Mark, which was general on costs, but we also have another thing I have here that, actually Sherry helped me out with it too, and the cost for both audio and video would be $837.98, so it's less than $1,000 to put something like that in play here. The other thing is, just so that you guys are aware of, I've had many of folks on the street kind of talk to me about the questions about it, and actually, they were kind of excited, because a lot of people can't make it to these meetings on Monday night, and thanks to Greg and the signal, a lot of times, people read something, and then they're like, well, what happened? This would give them the opportunity to actually review and watch it if they choose to. Talked to a couple of our local folks on the computer side to download it into our website, less than a half hour. And there are speakers, where you have eight speakers, they're being able to move them around. We always talk about having a person set up front if they want to talk to this board, that gives them the ability and the clarity to be heard and recorded, so. If anybody wants to take a look at this, is that around?
Question I have, so that was audio and video?
Audio and video.
And then microphones?
Included, eight microphones. And you can adjust the mixers.
I want to make sure we have talk on that.
You can adjust the mixers on it, you can do just audio, and that's three, roughly $350. Your video is then with the cameras, like Mark put on there, it's a different form what you want to pay for. I did one, here just this Christmas, bought another camcorder, really nice one, similar to these, does a great job videotaping, you can pick up sound, and like I said, you add the, the microphones, you can hear, place them strategically here between us, you can hear everything, and it's all built in there.
That particular system that's going around was recommended for this particular application for a school board meeting. The eight microphones that are included are wireless, so they can be set anywhere, and they're not attached to the equipment.
Does anyone need to run the video? They just sit generally?
Push a button and let it go.
Okay.
You can set it on tripod or table or something, it's got wired up. This is what you found before last week?
Yep, same thing.
Sorry. How long are you going to keep the videotapes and audiotapes?
Well, I think it'd be same with our website on, and we put the minutes on there when we just started and after a year.
But we keep our minutes forever.
Yeah, we can keep our minutes up to even on that, you can keep them up to a few years and then discard after a few years.
I, I just really don't see a point in it. I don't think we have many people that are interested in watching the video, Sean, or listening to the, that's my personal opinion.
And I understand that, and I guess after listening to people in the public here, they disagree with you, Mark, and we got nine people that, like you said, they're interested in our school board, got nine people that decided to run for election. I think people are interested.
I've actually had people offer to buy that system for us if we use it.
I think what I question is that when he did the survey of the area schools, there were no other schools that did this.
Then let's shut down them.
I don't see why we have to set the precedence, and that's when we kept good minutes all these years without.
I guess that's the same theory as then shut down the middle school, because most C schools don't have a middle school.
Well, no, I didn't say that.
Well, I know, but that's, I mean, that's about as crazy as...
I just don't feel that there's a need for it at this time.
If they had the buildings, they might have a middle school. We have a building.
A lot of schools do that are C that have consolidated.
Why do you not want to, I mean, what's the objection to having the public see what we do here?
They can come, it's an open meeting, they can come and see what we want.
There are other meetings that are going on, there are people that can't get out that would like to watch it on their own.
I don't think there's hardly anybody, Sherry, that is going to spend the night watching the video or board meetings, I really don't.
And that's fine for people to disagree with that, maybe it is to vote, no people on pushing that we go there, because it's no different than, you know, anything else that we spend, I don't think it's a waste of money. I mean, if that were the case, I'd look at other things that we do here that would be a waste of money.
They can read the minutes and know what happened at a board meeting in 10 minutes. They're not going to spend an hour and a half watching when they can read 10 minutes of minutes.
Right now, you and I discussed, and we disagreed on the whole basketball coaching, I truly remember you saying, "I will not hire administrators if I can't as coaches," and I understand that.
Never said it, Sean.
But see, that's why with video.
I've, I've been a superintendent and coached football and basketball while I was superintendent.
And I understand, but you, you did say that.
No, I've never said it.
So let's, do we have any further discussion on the video?
I don't see where it's going to benefit the students.
But benefits the district, I mean, we represent the district, there's nine of us here.
Then, I understand what you're saying, I have no problems, then my question is, and I'll throw this piece of tidbit out there, same thing with our administrators, their cell phone, how does that benefit our kids? When they're downloading or looking at sports, picking up games, how does that help our kids? And I've watched it. I don't want to use the cloak of the kids as an issue, I really don't. I think if we got to look at it as a taxpayer, they should have that right to be able to look at it. If it falls, then it falls, that's fine, that's the way I'm going to leave it, so.
I guess I, I don't have a problem if we do the audio recorder, I mean, the other main in this town, the city, the county, they do the audio, and so I wouldn't have a problem, I don't think we need a video, I mean, we've got somebody videoing, and if they, if they don't do it, I mean, I guess that's not our fault. So I guess my thought would be, if we want to let people have the opportunity, then I think that if, I think Sean said $350 roughly would be a video, or audio recorder, and, you know, I, I've never went and listened to the cities, I know other people have, and so I don't know, I think they might have, just being at a meeting, I think they might have one at the table there, and maybe four spread out, I'm not for sure, but I would think that if, if we want to keep them informed that that's what we decided, I think video, or not, I don't think we need video, I think audio should be sufficient. I guess I'm going to kind of agree with Jim a little bit, I've had a few people make comments about it would be nice to be able to get in, you know, when they're busy at different meetings, and we have controversy on what was said two months ago, three months, we go back and look at it and put it back up, and I think maybe by having at least an audiotape, it might, maybe check ourselves just a little bit when we're having discussions, knowing that it's going to be recorded and everybody has the opportunity to listen to it. I have had people say that, you know, they think it's something we should do, we have the, I think, the largest budget in, you know, in the Geneva district, you know, the city has one, the county has one, I mean, to me, for $350, it's kind of a nice, nice little idea to, you know, whether we'll ever use it or not, you know, I don't know. To me, that's a compromise, I kind of like Jim's idea.
Then we've got a different motion.
I don't think...
We don't have a motion, I guess we've just been discussing.
We don't have it yet, I don't think.
I didn't hear anybody second it.
What do we want for a motion?
I can live going to audio right now, and we'll start there. See, it is beneficial.
I would second that, if there's going to be audio.
Moved by Sean, seconded by Randy, that the board approved audio recordings of all public school board meetings.
We get to put a dollar amount on anything, or is that...
Oh, yeah, we wouldn't need that.
Is that the only bid you got?
Yeah, that's the only, did you mean...
Did Sherry already have the motion?
Yeah, so it was, it was moving, so it was moving, so I thought...
Well, but we, but I asked for clarification, because whether it was video or audio or both.
I will rescind my second.
I rescind the motion.
Sorry, I'm sorry.
That's, the first motion.
So do we need a dollar amount on audio?
Or at least like put an upper limit, up to...
I'd say up to $500, and just leave it at that? Because that's at $350, that's, is an extra $200, you break the bank from where you have it.
Okay, let me see if I have this right. Okay, audio recordings of all meetings, and we will spend up to a maximum of $500 for the equipment. That sound right?
What happens if the equipment fails during the meeting, do we have to stop the meeting till we get it fixed?
Let's deal with that one while you're there. I mean, do you, do you think it's going to fail? We probably won't even know if it fails, to be honest with you. I mean, seriously, we're not going to know if it takes the first test. No, that's fine.
Any further discussion?
Dennis, I have a question. Okay, so if this passes, how would, how would Patriot come and listen to, would it be in the superintendent's office, I mean, how would, how would it happen?
I have no idea. Do you know what they do at the city? Do they go and listen, do they just go into the council and really listen? I, I know somebody that...
It's in the council chamber, you can go, but...
They just say, hey, I'm going there.
Deputy or the clerk will walk you in there and rewind it, do it, during normal business hours. All right.
I think that's, I think that's something probably they could, Mark or Jody, you guys could figure out.
I'm sure she can check them out, too.
And they can go in one of them, if the board room is not being used or something, you could, I think that Mark can figure that out.
We got some detention cells.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Maloli?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
No.
None, yes. Ochsner?
No.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Delmeyer?
No.
So what was that?
Five.
Five, three motion passes.
Retirement incentive applications, we need a motion for Dorothy Miller. I'll move. Jim?
Second.
Jim? Moved by Donovan, and seconded by Shelkov, that the board approved the retirement incentive application submitted by Dorothy Miller. Discussion? Roll call?
Donovan?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
Maloli?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
And Delmeyer?
Yes.
Retirement incentive applications for Softley, Arlene Softley.
I'll move a motion?
Mark?
I'll second.
Jim? Moved by Mark, seconded by Jim, that the board approved the retirement incentive application submitted by Arlene Softley. Discussion? Roll call?
Lightwine?
Yes.
Donovan?
Yes.
Maloli?
Yes.
None, yes. Ochsner?
Yes.
Shelkov?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
And Delmeyer?
Yes.
That finishes the action items, I guess, now we move into discussion items. July and August board meetings, it's been proposed that we move them a week later, does anyone have any thoughts on that?
Yes.
Can I make it?
The August one, Jim, we usually move a week later, just so we can get more bills paid, because it's the end of the fiscal year, we've done that about the last two or three years. In my board report, I had said I wanted to move the July one, I have a chance to go to the National High School Federation Association, NSA pays my way, and it's from July 7th through 11th, which falls within that time, and I'd like to be able to go.
What's the date, what's the date supposed to be, Monday?
July 9th is the Monday, and I propose to move it to the 16th.
Is that, Janet, do you know when the calendar parapons, or?
Uh, 13th or something.
Is that on, like, the back?
13th or Friday, I mean, it's like, we're going to do like a Saturday or whatever, this week.
Yeah, July 13th, Friday.
We'll vote on the next month.
Well, you find your...
Well, it's just a discussion item.
And obviously, we can't have a meeting without you, right?
Right. What's the quorum? What's the quorum, five?
Five.
I don't have, I don't have any problems, we've always, like you said, we've always done August on that way, correct?
Yeah, well, at least the last three.
Yeah, the last two.
Depending on how late it falls, but we usually move it to the 30th. For later, it just makes it a lot easier. Our fiscal year is done August 30th, you know, and so if we can get as many bills paid as possible, so, you know, that looks good.
We get to that point, we can always move it to Wednesday or something, if, if, if we're not going to have, if we're going to miss two or three or something's going on too. Last year, I missed, I think I missed July because I was on vacation.
So, Kennedy, we were okay with that, with everything?
As I said, I...
Is that okay?
It's good. Yeah.
The next discussion item is the spirit squad or the cheerleaders, I understand we have someone who wants to restart that.
Well, yeah, I do, I guess. I, I put it in your notes, and I've been approached at different times the past seven years, I think the board actually eliminated cheerleading, maybe the year before I got here, and I think it was mainly because of lack of numbers, I think three girls maybe tried out for the last time, and, and it was before me. So when I got here, I've been approached at different times about somebody saying, you know, I wish we had cheerleaders, I wish we had cheerleaders, but for the most part, I've disregarded it, until Monica Kleinschmidt approached me a year ago, and Monica had a plan, and she had a, a written plan and a typed up plan, and she sat down and met with me, and she was willing to make a commitment, so I spent this past year studying it, I visited with our administrators about it. We have a steering committee that has two teachers from each building, plus the administrators, so it's a 10-person steering committee, and Monica presented it to the steering committee, and the majority of the steering committee was in favor of, of giving it a try, and so I made the decision then that we would take it to the board and get the board's thoughts upon it. I put the cost down there for you, Monica did survey some students, and she found well over 20 students, I think, willing to give it a try, so the costs are outlined there, would take about $10,000 to get it started, and, you know, there'd be certain costs every year, but it's probably, it's probably in line with the rest of the activities that we offer, no different, so. But I wanted the board's thoughts on it, and it's a decision I think the board needs to make, and it would be if the board so agrees, we'd make it as an action item next month. We need to talk about it now, and I think get an indication from you how you feel about it, because Monica and Danny would like to start working on this for next year, if we're going to do it next year, including tryouts for kids and whatever, so.
Monica, could you outline kind of what you're thinking, the cheerleaders and everything?
Monica, could you outline kind of what you're thinking about cheerleaders and everything?
Yeah, with the different activities that are, that are already involved, we don't want to take away from what Fillmore Central has now, so we would have a squad of 10 and split that into two groups of five, schedule A and schedule B, you're not always on one schedule, it just depends on, you know, what type of activity you're in, or what things are going on at the school at the same time, so we could have, you know, some, a five, a group of five cheering at a volleyball game, and a group of five at a football game in the same evening, and still fit everybody's schedule that way. First year, we would just do the home games to try that out before we would move on to any type of away games.
I always thought it was a good program, and I missed it when it dropped, but I think it's good for the kids, good for the kids that are involved. My daughter was a cheerleader, and one day she wore a t-shirt to school saying, if cheerleading was easy, we'd call it football. So I, because she got a lot out of it, I thought, I think it's a good program.
Well, I am super excited about this, I think this is great, because as a freshman parent, I had no idea that it was on the responsibility of the parents to make posters and yard signs and hope of homecoming, and when I think that should be passed on to the kids, so I commend you for what you're doing. Do you think that you will come up with what, like all activities, we have a handbook that she, you know, can follow and?
She already has a handbook, so it needs to be revised a little bit, maybe Danny will take a look at that, I, but it's all pretty inclusive already, so.
Does each activity have a handbook?
Yeah.
You don't see those come off? I read mine together.
I didn't know they were going to track me, they're, you're like, you didn't tell me.
How's the selection process, they just try out and then who picks them and who?
I would like to have a panel of five judges, I have some of the New York cheerleading coach committed to it, there's one from New York College, because they have a cheerleading squad for the first time this year, she'll come and be a judge, I'd like one in maybe the steering committee or even the board, you know, a member from one of those, myself, you know, just try and keep it as level as possible. I have a very extensive point system on what we would score for the tryout process, and we'd average that. We also included a pep club with the proposal, so those that, you know, if we do have to cut somebody from that, they could roll over to a pep club type of thing, and that's really just organizing the kids that are already coming to the games and giving them some material and structuring that a little bit more, so that we can support all activities and sports, even though we're not cheering at all of them.
And Joni Karcher wouldn't have to start the cheerleading basketball. You do a good job, I'm not cutting, I'm not.
I think this was an awesome idea.
Is it just senior high, talking junior high?
Just senior high. The kids that we did survey were just the ones that would, that would be in the 10th through 12th grade, so the numbers that we accumulated don't include the upcoming ninth grade.
So then it'll be an action item next week, is that what you want?
Yes.
Is that okay with the board? Make it an action item next time, okay? Thank you, that was a good presentation. Now we have board policy review.
We're all the way through the 3,000s, we just had four that people had checked for further review, and so I've enclosed those four, I believe, in there.
There was no checklist.
So we don't need a checklist, because these four are already checked for further review.
We were discussing these.
These were the four that people had checked off, so, and really, 3205, I don't think we even need 3205 anymore, we don't charge anyone tuition with the option enrollment, they just come in, we don't charge them, if you charged them, they wouldn't option enroll, so, we don't, we don't charge tuition, so I really think we could probably just eliminate that.
That was my question, I'm a little marked, because I have never heard we charge any tuition, so.
Yeah, no, we don't.
Probably shouldn't have it.
I don't think we do.
If we're not going to enforce it, then.
That'd be my recommendation.
We'll vote on it next month.
We'll vote on it next month, but yeah, I would say. Then people had checked off 3210, somebody had.
I didn't check it, but what's the NEP, they're ruling that if you can require students to provide their own?
They have a, they have a student fee law now, but we have a student fee policy, so, since then.
So like industrial tech, you're probably off the brain, if you're going to build a nightstand, you probably, probably.
We offer projects, or they can build a project, but for them to keep it or possess it, they pay the, they pay the fee, but that's, that's all. Otherwise, we provide them with a project that they need for the school.
Oh.
You know, we can do that, we're not, we're not going to charge them anything if they want a project, but want to do one, but don't want to pay for it and take it home.
So we just really, has anything, we'll just move on? I don't know who checked it.
3225 and 3305 are both, both checked to for the.
Is there a problem with 3225? Okay, move on then. 3305? How many more sections do we got?
We'll be starting at 4,000 next month.
That's our, I should know, I should have. The next board meeting is scheduled for Monday, April 9th, at 7:30. Okay with anybody? The motion for adjournment?
I would move.
Jim and Jana? Roll call.
Donovan?
Yes.
Schelkoff?
Yes.
Maloney?
Yes.
None, yes. Ashner?
Yes.
Kleinschmidt?
Yes.
Lightwine?
Yes.
And Delmeyer?
Yes.